All right, let's go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning everyone, welcome. It is Thursday, July 3rd. I'm Aaron Mays. I am representing District 3. On my left is Commissioner Rippon, representing District 1. On my right, Commissioner Cook, representing District 2. Morning to both of you.
Morning.
Kyle Edelman at the far right, representing our County Counselor's office. And Jennifer Sauer, welcome to the desk for the first time in awhile for audit finance. I know this is a day Jennifer's been looking forward to for quite some time. So, let's go ahead and dive in with our first item, and that is TARC, I believe, right?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to make our presentation today instead of Monday. Today is my last day with TARC. I am retiring after almost 15 years. But this is our 15th year of requesting funding to the county to support not only TARC but CAPER and SLI as well. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the county, not just for the support that we get through the budget process, but for all the county has done. It is Thursday, July 3rd. I'm Aaron Mays. I am representing District 3. On my left is Commissioner Rippon, representing District 1. On my right, Commissioner Cook, representing District 2. Morning to both of you.
Morning.
Kyle Edelman at the far right, representing our County Counselor's Office. And Jennifer Sauer, welcome to the desk for the first time in a while for audit finance. I know this is a day Jennifer's been looking forward to for quite some time, so let's go ahead and dive in with our first item, and that is TARC, I believe, right?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to make our presentation today instead of Monday. Today is my last day with TARC. I am retiring after almost 15 years, but this is our 15th year of requesting funding to the county to support not only TARC but Capper and SLI as well. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the county, not just for the support that we get through the budget process, but for all the county has done with respect to our fundraising efforts. We wouldn't be where we are today if we didn't raise the money that we do annually with Winter Wonderland, which is made possible through our partnership with you, as well as the golf tournament, which is made possible again because of our relationship with Lake Shawnee. So, thank you for not only what I'm about to ask, but that support as well. Our request is pretty straightforward. We are asking for funding for all of the same programs that we ask for every year with just a slight 3% overall increase. That would be spread equally, 3% for SLI, 3% for Capper, and 3% for TARC, for a total request of $1,091,794. And I'm available to answer any questions about our program, activities, if you'd like me to share some highlights from the past work that we've done or what we will be doing in the future.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you for all of your service. I know that there's been a lot of celebratory of your time with TARC and everything you've done, but really, thank you for all of your service to the community and everything you've done. It's going to be a sad, it's going to be a little bit bittersweet to come to Winter Wonderland celebrations and not have you there, but I'm sure you're always welcome to come back.
Yes, and TARC, I have been making the rounds in our program areas, and I say this so sincerely. I told them that I was making the request of all of you today, and there's no request that's easier to make, that you all so value and appreciate and recognize the incredible programming, not only of our children's services program, but our adult services with employment services and our avenues program. So, they make it easy to ask you for this support because they do such exceptional work in our community.
You've been a great partner on other projects, also everything from shredding to just different projects we have within the county, so thank you for all that you do and making it easy to be a partner, too.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, please.
I just echo what Commissioner Cook said. Thank you for all you do for this community. Thank you.
I will miss it.
Yeah, well, you say that those things can't happen with us, but certainly couldn't have happened without you, so congratulations on your retirement and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. We have accomplished a lot in the last 15 years, and I know they will continue to accomplish a lot more in the next 15, but I was so happy to have been a part of it, and I'm just, I was grateful to have this opportunity to thank you in person today, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is going to be our District Attorney.
Mike Kegay, Shawnee County DA. I will attempt to be short and sweet this morning, although it will not be as short or as sweet as your last presentation. As you all know, our mission, simply stated, is to serve justice and to do that in Shawnee County. My priorities are to do that in the most efficient and effectively possible, and the 2026 budget reflects our strategic investment in those priorities while maintaining operational discipline and fiscal responsibility. I have two primary areas of focus this year. They are core staffing stability and employee retention, and we're also working on modernizing infrastructure. As you all know and you have supported these efforts, we upgraded our case management software a few years ago. Last year, we began implementation of the Axon Justice software, which is ongoing. We've hit a couple infrastructure snags that we're working through with IT to make sure that gets implemented properly, but it's very promising, and I am confident it's going to make us much more efficient as we go forward. Efficiency is critical. It's absolutely necessary to our operation. There's a lot of talk about caseload management and making sure that attorneys don't have too many cases on their caseload. We have ethical responsibilities to be competent, to be prepared, and diligent in all of our efforts. The closest guide I could find was something that was written by the American Bar Association in 2002 about prosecution and caseload limits. In 2002, they recommended no more than 150 cases for prosecutors. Now, in 2002, we didn't have anywhere near the digital evidence we have today. Cases were a lot simpler. In those days, you could literally go grab a paper file, pick it up and go, and you would probably be okay to make it work. Today, that's just not the reality. We have to go through and review all the digital evidence. We have to make sure we have all of it. That's why Axon Justice is so important, and again, thank you for your support on that. Where we are today, I have several of my attorneys with a caseload of 150 cases, and if that was the maximum in 2002, before those changes, we're probably, we're probably doing too much as it is right now. We are certainly pushing the limit. However, as I've said, I want to be as efficient as possible. I don't want to have anything that's unnecessary or duplicative in the office, and I've in fact eliminated a couple positions from this budget request because I believe that was Our ADAs right now, based on our survey of other prosecution offices in our area, our young attorneys are earning 18.2% less than their peers in other prosecution offices. Our senior level attorneys are 9.3% behind. These are gaps, unfortunately, which have taken a toll already. We've lost some younger attorneys to other prosecution offices. We've lost some senior attorneys to other positions for more money in public service. And I'm asking for your help. I'm asking for your help to make sure that we can retain the staff that we have. We have excellent attorneys. We have an excellent team. I'm not trying to build at this point. I'm just trying to retain the talent that we have, and I'm not asking to be competitive in the private sector. I know that'll never happen. I'm just asking to be competitive in our own sphere. And so, the numbers that we looked at and the comparison that we did is a direct wage study comparison to other prosecution offices in northeast Kansas. That's what we're talking about. Our legal assistants, who provide the support for everything that the attorneys do, absolutely critical for the functioning workflow of the office, currently are 24% below market However, despite these challenges, we have been extraordinarily successful in achieving our mission over the last 12 months. You know, it's Independence Day tomorrow, and I'm wearing my flag tie for the first time, and I was thinking this morning about justice because that's what we do. We serve justice and we pursue it. That's our mission. That's why we exist, but that's not something that you can really quantify, right? What does justice look like? And you can have a whole conversation about that, but there's no debate on this. Justice is a foundational element to American society and to any civilized society anywhere. In fact, when you look at the United States Constitution, which I've taken an oath to uphold and enforce, it's the first item listed. It's in the preamble. In order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, and then they go on to talk about common defense and other things. Justice is foundational, and I am happy to report that in Shawnee County, justice has been served. So since I stood before you last time, we've had a number of jury trials. We filed nearly 3,000 cases, and some of those, many of those jury trials were what we called major felony type offenses, which tend to be homicide and sex offenses, but also include other things like aggravated burglary, aggravated battery, aggravated domestic battery, drug distribution, crimes like this. So I just want to walk you through some of our, some of our work since I was before you last time. And understand, every time we try a case, this is the ultimate test for any attorney, and it's certainly the ultimate test for a prosecutor. It's an adversarial system. We carry the burden to prove the case. We have the highest burden within the legal structure. That's what prosecutors do. We have to have all of our ducks in a row. We have to be completely prepared, and the other side is going to fight, and they're going to fight like hell because the cases we're talking about are the most serious cases. These have life-changing consequences for everyone involved. So, I'm going to walk you through some briefly. Since I've been up here, my major felony team has tried a number of cases. Every single one of those cases, every single one, has ended with a guilty verdict. That kind of performance and that kind of outcome is certainly unmatched in recent history, modern history, and we do have an attorney who's been at the office since 1968, and I asked him if he knew of something similar, and he was not aware of anything like that before. In today's day and age, where the public is certainly more skeptical of law enforcement and government in general than they've ever been, I am extremely proud to report those numbers to you. This is what that looks like. Amber Peary, charged with manslaughter, was convicted at trial, guilty as charged. Shan Kwetong, charged with rape, aggravated sex battery, and criminal sodomy, guilty as charged. Anthony Herrera, rape aggravated, indecent liberties, guilty as charged. Jacory Porter, manslaughter, felony murder, aggravated endangering a child, guilty as charged. Stephen Hunter, second degree murder, felony, felon possession of a firearm, and interference with law enforcement, guilty as charged. Orlando Braxton, felony murderer, five other charges, guilty. Dennis Johnson, aggravated indecent liberties, human trafficking, kidnapping, guilty as charged. Anthony Downing, attempted premeditated murder, felon possession of a firearm, guilty as charged. Dana Chandler, two counts of first degree premeditated murder, guilty. Andre Quinn, felony murder, aggravated robbery, guilty. Joshua Mitchner, felony murderer, eight counts of sexual exploitation of a child, guilty as charged. Tremel Sorano, first and second degree murder, guilty as charged. Last year, I told you, if you gave me the funding, I would give you the best prosecution office in the state. Now I'm asking for your help to keep it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. District Attorney, I note on the last or near the end, you note that the backlog created by the COVID shutdown, you've addressed that. Would you think that your office is all the way caught up into current prosecution now, or are there still some cases that are still trying to get caught up on?
There are still some cases. The COVID backlog was eliminated, but here's the reality. Every time we have vacancies in the attorney roster, we have to have attorneys to go to court to manage the caseload. We have to draw from other areas. Some of those areas could be charging. So when I stand here and tell you that we have openings and that it's a competitive environment to hire attorneys right now, that's what it looks like. Cases get put on the back burner, cases that have not been charged yet, and ultimately, there is a, there is a place where we could get to a crisis point where we're not able to file those charges because we simply do not have the staffing to carry it out.
Do you have openings in your office currently, or are you fully staffed up at the moment?
We currently have openings for attorneys. We have two openings, and that is not including interns that we currently have in-house that have been with us that are taking the bar exam in July this month, and that we have made offers and they've accepted the offer. So assuming that all goes well, we'll have two vacancies, so we are currently looking.
Okay. And then those positions that you're looking to fill, are those starting positions or those for people that have been in practice for some time?
One is a senior level position, one is a starting position.
And then with 2025, you did have the major cases that you mentioned. Are there major cases, capital cases, that you're dealing with right now?
The major case comes to mind in part because I'm preparing for the sentencing next week, and the sentencing will take place the week following, is a case involving the rape and murder of a five-year-old girl here in Shawnee County, which I'm sure you're familiar with. I'll be arguing that sentencing in about two weeks.
Okay. And then after that, I mean, do we have others that are coming down the pipeline that you're needing specific budget for?
I would love to stand here and say we will not receive any new major felony cases or any capital cases.
Obviously.
But that remains to be seen.
Okay. No worries. Thank you.
A couple questions. So, the Axon Justice, that's $175,000, is that correct, or how much was that? Do you remember?
So we did a 10-year contract with them, and there's a slightly increasing amount year over year, but I think the average is around $100,000 a year.
Okay. I'm just looking at, I haven't dug into the details details, but I'm looking at subscription software, and it's got $175,000 there as an expense that was not there last year.
And to be clear, and I'm sorry, I should have included this in my opening statement, I have for the first time hired an accountant, and that accountant works for me full-time, and she is very specific and wants everything to be in exactly, you know.
I'm noticing there's a shift. So, yeah, last year, you had $300,000 in contractual services. This year, you have $1,500, and then it's all broken out into individual items.
And I believe she's been working with audit finance to determine the appropriate place to allocate those within the budget. Moving forward, we will not have that kind of movement. This is a one-time reset. She started with us in January, and she's very precise.
Yeah, I can tell. Yeah, so, okay, well, I'll probably have more questions about some of that because, I mean, when, when you look at it, you know, your parking validation went from $150 to $5,100, and so, you know, that kind of thing, I probably want to look at and just make sure that we're understanding it.
I'll also add that historically, we have used our diversion fund for some of those expenses, and through conversations with the County Counselor's Office, we've determined that is not the best practice, and so we are not doing that, have not been doing that since, I would say, almost for the last 12 months, and so this budget reflects that as well. Those expenses need to be paid directly out of our general fund.
Okay, and then, so back to the Axon Justice, you know, are you guys fully, is that fully integrated into your office now, or?
No, but we've started that process. I would say it's substantially integrated. We have hit a couple infrastructure kind of bandwidth-type issues, working through those with Director Price, and I'm confident we'll be able to do full implementation here shortly.
Okay, and one of, one of the reasons that we made that investment was to save man hours, personnel hours in your office, and so, are you thinking that's going to happen?
Well, if you recall, after that investment was approved, I did eliminate several positions within my budget request in anticipation of that being the case, and we had a conversation about it at that time.
Okay, and so the personnel expenses, which are about a million dollars increase over last year, that's all wages, or is that additional people as well?
So, there is a 3% increase that's applied because of an extra pay period. Everyone has that.
Sure.
There's a 5% increase that's applied for the instructions we were given. Beyond that, there is only 4.39% above that, and that includes the diversion, that includes the reallocation of the infrastructure for the cold case unit, which we talked about. You expressed a preference last time I was before you to discuss cold case funding, and the balance of that would be approximately 3%, and that's a market correction based on the wage study that we did.
Okay. Any further questions?
Oh, I, oh, I was just going to say, it was a little hard to follow with the shifting of the different line items in here, but. of the different line items in here, but I just wanted to ask, it looks like you're going to have some major cases coming up in the following year due to more homicides and whatnot.
Well, I mean, we have a large number of major cases at all times. What I can anticipate is, will we have a new capital case, or any unknown future major cases? But historically, Shawnee County averages between 18 to 24 homicides per year, and the vast number of those do end up being charged in my office. And that's just homicide. It doesn't account for sex offenses, other type of high-level...
I've also heard that there's kind of a shortage of attorneys in the state of Kansas.
There is. There's a lot of competition. And so, and I'll just use myself as a reference point. When I applied to the DA's office, there were 18 people fighting for one position. I've had positions posted for months. Probably, I just kind of have a continuous post out there, and I've had, I think, two applications this year. And so there is a lot of competition for that, young attorney talent. And the way that we're trying to offset that is by using our intern program as kind of our in-house farm system. And that's delivered good results so far.
Yep. Jennifer?
So, and as I'm looking through your notes, it looks like about $100,000 of your increase across the different MSAs is due to a shift from the diversion fund. Is there another use of those diversion funds that you're going to be using? Or what is, what does the other end of that shift of expenses look like?
You're saying, what is the diversion fund for now?
Yes.
So what we've used it for is, you know, let's do a donation to Life House Child Advocacy Center. Let's do one for the YWCA. Let's do one for the Boys and Girls. And these are presented to this body for approval. And that's the only use that we've had for them, honestly, in the last, I mean, several months.
Okay. And then...
I would note, too, historically, there have been some other uses. When we created a break room area within the courthouse, we used diversion funds for that and partly funded. And we also used that funding to help alleviate renovating costs in one of the courtrooms before the great courthouse renovation project began. So...
And then my other question was on the about $50,000, $55,000-ish that are for IT upgrades. Are these in addition to or going off-cycle from upgrades that the IT department would be scheduling? Or has that been coordinated at all with the IT department?
It has. We've had those discussions. I've spoken with Director Price about their upgrade schedule. So we probably meet, honestly, I meet with Mark at least once a month.
So this would just be going in addition to any cost his department would have for your...
That's correct.
Maintenance? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Your district attorney's office, with all of the upgrades and changes we did at the courthouse, one of the things that we didn't touch was the carpet in your office. It's pretty thread-borne at this time in a lot of areas. Was just in there yesterday looking at it. Have you worked with the facilities, or do you have it in your plan to replace the carpet for the district attorney's office main area?
I think that's an excellent observation. I agree with it, and it's something that should happen. But given my other priorities, frankly, it's just not something that's made it to the top of my list yet.
Okay.
But I agree with you. It does need to be replaced. I'd be happy to work with facilities and see what could be done there.
I know that we went to the squares several years ago, so it may be, instead of replacing all of the carpet, it may be just replacing those squares that are very worn.
Okay.
So you wear patterns where people walk regularly?
You can see where people have that.
Yes.
So I'll move, we talked about personnel, but there's a pretty significant increase in supplies, and a lot of it is $54,000 for computer hardware. Are you guys doing a software or a hardware refresh or something like that, or...
We are, and I think that's what we were talking about, that coordination between my office and IT. You know, we, infrastructure is important. Access to technology is important. The way things work now, my attorneys go to court and they take their laptop with them. So they have to be able to access that case management system. They have to be able to access everything from that laptop. And if there are problems with the infrastructure there, if there are problems with the laptop, the VPN, or the docking station, or the monitor when they plug in at their desk, those things have to be addressed. Otherwise, it's a significant workflow issue.
And then, this may be attributed to the accounting change as well, but like, you've got $6,000 for food. Is that something you were already paying for? It was just under a different item, or...
Yeah. So it says food, but essentially, what we do is, we have a series of mandatory and ongoing trainings, both for the attorneys. They have CLE responsibilities, but they also have to be trained on any number of things to carry out their duties day-to-day. We've also adopted a fairly comprehensive, trauma-informed process for our support staff who deal directly with the victims of crime. And so our process has been, when we have a mandatory training, we provide the food. And that's tied directly to a training event.
But it's something you were already paying for, it's just under a different...
Correct.
Accounting item?
It's not a new expense for us. It's directly attributable to the fact that now I have an accountant, and...
It's diversion.
It's split out?
It was originally from, it's currently from diversion. So in this year's budget, it was in the diversion fund.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up is going to be the courts.
Lee Welch, Court Administrator, Shawnee County District Court, and the 3rd Judicial District. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss our 2026 budget request with you this morning. We are, we have submitted a flat budget over 2025. That number does not include any increases for personnel costs based upon the standard 3% increase the county provides to our county-funded staff. So that budget number will remain the same. Also, our drug treatment and Veterans Treatment Court programs are requesting the same funding they have for the last several years, which is $15,000. We have a very strong and successful specialty courts program. This year, we have eight participants in our Veterans Treatment Court with another participant starting on Monday. And currently, we have 26 active and seven inactive or participants on the Drug Treatment Court. Those seven people are in a suspended status. But our Drug Treatment Court is typically full, so we continue to have a very successful program as far as our specialty courts go. Any increases that you notice in various line items to our budget have been offset by reductions in other line items within to maintain that flat budget. I certainly don't want to overlook the fact that the court is extremely appreciative and very grateful for the courthouse remodeling and also the renovations that were made to our courtrooms. As you know, we've been piecemealing some of those, and every year, our CIP requests were for one courtroom or two courtrooms, and that allowed us to take those off the table. And it's very nice to have all of our courtrooms updated and all of the same status as far as technology and operations. So that's very helpful. As far as our CIP requests go for the future years, the next five years are more or less focused on improving and upgrading our IT infrastructure. We haven't made any requests for CIP funding for this year. And as you can see, I've put some details as far as pricing and what the major project would be for the next five years after 2026, or four years after 2026. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those items. I can tell you that our IT manager, George Fluke, and Mark Price have been in discussions. We've been talking about this for several years, about doing a joint project and replacing the existing generator at the courthouse for IT with a generator sizable enough to support both the courts and the county. I know the county generator is pretty much at capacity, so he's needing to invest in a larger generator. And we've talked about the possibility of merging those two projects into a single project where we could both benefit from a larger generator to support our IT needs. A couple of items that are ongoing and are going to be forthcoming to the next year that we're really excited about. July 14th, we anticipate opening our self-help center. That will, that has, we have taken over the space that was formerly the county IT server room on the second floor, which is just down the hall from the clerk of the district court office. So Room 202, and I believe it was 204, have been renovated. The county provided, obviously, the windows, the shades, ceilings, and lighting. The court has put in new flooring in that space. We received several pieces of furniture through Access to Justice Grant Program we participated with through the Office of Judicial Administration. So to this point, the only expense that the court budget or the county has in that room is the carpet. All of the other, all of the furnishings have either been obtained without cost from the judicial branch or through grant funding through the Office of Judicial Administration. So we're really excited to have this up and running soon. Kansas Legal Services will begin staffing that space with an attorney at least four hours per week beginning the 1st of August. And we do have a number of volunteer attorneys who have primarily retired, who have indicated their interest and willingness to dedicate time to serve in our self-help center to assist the public. So we're really excited about having that project, getting that launched and off the ground. It's been a long time coming, and we're really excited. We'll be the last of the urban courts in the state to have a self-help center, so we're looking forward to that project. Another project that we're working on is, we've been working in partnership with Washburn Institute of Technology to develop a voice-reading court reporting program. Just as we have a tremendous shortage of attorneys in the state, we have an equally shortage of court reporters. And it's extremely hard to find court reporters. We've created some local rules regarding digital recording of hearings when we don't have court reporters available. If you take into consideration our two magistrate divisions, as well as our administrative hearing officer, we would have 18 divisions in the court, and we have six court reporters. So it doesn't take an accountant or a math major to determine that we don't have enough people to go around. We've had a vacancy. We used to have 14 court reporters with the court, and that number was reduced to 12. And we've dwindled our supply down to six, and we've had vacancy notices posted since I've been here with no resulting court reporters. So we've worked with Washburn Institute of Technology to create a voice reporting program. And our first class will be either four or five students, and all, four of those five are actually current court employees. And it's a 12-month apprenticeship program, and they will start classes on July 14th. So hopefully, by April next year, when the court reporter, certified court reporting exam comes around, we'll have a new crop of court reporters that will be devoted to working for Shawnee County for a minimum of two years following their certification. So if we can't find them anyplace else, we're going to grow our own and are really excited to see how this program works. We're devoted, the entire program in 2025, '26 will be for Shawnee County, but then, after that, we're going to open it up to other courts and others across the state who want to benefit from creating their own court reporter. So we're really excited about that. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I know that Judge Eberts is here, and he would like to say a few comments. And I'll turn the podium over to Judge Eberts unless you have any questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman and commissioners, I'm not going to take long, just a second to say, I'm sorry I was tardy. I had some emergency hearings today. But as you can see, we're presenting essentially a flat budget to you. I promised you last year with the funding increase that you provided to the court that this year, absent some emergency, we would provide you with a flat budget, and that's what we're doing. So we want to keep our promise to you. And finally, I just want to say thank you for the courthouse renovation, your support of the court. It's greatly appreciated. And if there are any questions or concerns you have, I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Well, I know it looks like we're done with the courthouse renovations, but I believe we've got some bathrooms that we're still going to work on, so don't think it's just yet. We've still got a little bit more work to do. Part of the increase in your budget last year was for the AOT program.
Yes.
How has the implementation of that gone?
Of course, the funding wouldn't have been available until January, so we've worked with Valeo. I know Valeo's had some changes in their administration and their operations. But we've worked with Valeo, the district attorney's office, and the attorneys that support AOT. We have two candidates that have enrolled in the program so far. We're kind of at the point, really, of testing before officially announcing the program and saying we're, we are up and running. But I had an emergency hearing this morning where I made a request that another person be referred to AOT. So I can't give definitive answers about how successful the program is so far, but we are starting to have some participation, and I'm optimistic that we're going to have even more people participating. And the ultimate goal would be to keep those people from going back to the state hospital, keep those people out of the county jail so we can reduce that expense as well. So I'm hoping I'll have a better answer for you this time next year.
Okay.
But we do have some participation, so I'm optimistic about it.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other questions?
Could you tell everyone what the AOT stands for?
Yes, sir. It's Assisted Outpatient Treatment. And essentially, we have residents of our community that have or suffer from mental health issues. They'll go through what's called the care and treatment process, where a petition is filed typically by the district attorney's office to have someone placed in a state hospital. It's involuntary commitment. And we see a certain number of individuals in the community where they're just on that merry-go-round of, they are committed, they get treatment, they get released, they fall off their medication or treatment plan, they go right back to the state hospital, and it's kind of this, again, a circular system. We're trying to break that repeating pattern and support these folks and give them resources so they don't go back to the jail, they don't go back to the state hospital, and hopefully overall, reduce costs for the county, but most importantly, help people so they don't go back to the state hospital.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not that I have anything for the judge. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, and before we go to the next, I don't know if we have any, if Amanda or Bruce have anything to add from the drug court, or I know that we, there's a flat budget request, but I don't know if the commission has any request of them or any questions.
Not for me.
All right. Then I just want to appreciate them for being here, and I know they took time out to come over, and so, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next up is going to be Department of Corrections.
Good morning, commissioners. Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. I first want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present to you what we truly believe is a responsible budget request. Before I get started, we have members from our team, Major Tim Phelps, Major Angela McCarty, Major Steve Willis, and Major Joe Rucker, and then members of Community Corrections with Trenton James and Aaron Hicks, both are division managers. Our approach to our... Our approach to our budget is a team approach. We work together. We start literally months and months ahead of time, looking at trends, looking at our statistics, looking at our data, looking at our vision and goals to decide what are the priorities that we need. And what's truly important in that and a deep amount of appreciation goes to Jennifer and her team because they meet with us and we call them probably too much, but we do work with them and have meetings often throughout the year, almost quarterly, to look at the trends and the areas that we're going. Commissioner's budget that you're, when I get started, and I promise you not to take too long, is going to have the theme of opening our behavioral health unit. As we get started, that, what I would like to look at, number one is, is that our contracted services, that for food service, this is going to be about a 4% increase. This goes to the consumer price index that we use each year and goes along with the contracted services that we have. With healthcare, this is a 2.88% as per the contract that we have in place. We have another, our last two budgets that I want to talk to, well, there's three and they'll be Community Corrections, is I want to start with detention, or in the detention side, that our overall budget request is about 14.5%. Now, that is a tough pill to swallow. And I understand with us being the largest budget in the county, and I think that comes with a great deal of responsibility and purpose of what we have to serve. In the detention budget, you will notice that everything outside of our number ones is a flat budget, that we didn't ask for increases in the detention budget outside of our MSA ones, which is the staffing. What we asked for in our MSA ones is based off of staffing analysis that we use internally and verify with the Department of Corrections, which is the same formula that they use, other than us spending close to $100,000 and doing it. I get their, I get their formula and then we do this inside, which I've always done in the past anyway. But what we're asking for in the Department of Corrections to be able to answer, or to open this, and this was the anticipation of opening all three floors. So we understand that we're going to be very close. We don't know yet if we're going to be opening all three floors. It may not, we may not get there. But we're asking for 30 correction specialists to be able to open the behavioral health unit. This isn't a matter of that I'm going to be able to clean out nine or five or six modules in the jail and move them all over there. You have to remember the, if we were going to 40 to 60 beds, I have 40 and 50 bed modules. So we're going to be taking pieces out of each module and moving them in there when this opens up in 26th of April. Every one of these behavioral health specialists are going to be, have to have mandatory training, training both in CIT and mental health first aid, which is all going to be provided either through our academy or through training. This is going to be a selection process. We're getting people that are going to be specifically trained. To anticipate that, we are working with the Kansas Department for Aging and Disabilities on possible funding. And we've, Major Tim Phelps and I have worked with them and we're working with them still on looking at programming dollars for staffing in this area. So that still is a possible avenue. We just, they're waiting to get back with us on that. But these are all staffed based off of 12-hour shifts. These are all staffed that are going to be working directly and with those that suffer serious mental illness, who are going to be also participating and providing some of the programming that is inside the modules. Now, that is 30 based off of three if we're open a full facility. So obviously.
Thirty-three, right?
Thirty-three. Well, yes. Thirty, I want to say, first of all, the thirty is directly with the behavioral health unit. The other three are, number one, one to a programs officer. There's going to be increased programs that we're going to be using in that. Right now, we've had the same amount of programs officers for the last 10 years. And so we're trying to increase the number of programming staff. Classification staff, we're going to have to be working not only with our competency restoration, but we're going to have specific classification duties that are going to be needed for this specific group, going to mean who meets the criteria to go into this facility. So that is going to be a much needed. The other was just transportation. I'm asking for one more transportation. I want to give a shout out to Sheriff Hill. We work very closely with the sheriff's office on trying to manage our transports. One of the things that I can tell you is we now are at the point to where we are manning a post inside the facility just for onsite attorney visits. That has become so popular through Zoom that we're manning that. Sometimes with one and two train, or transport staff to manage the number of visits that attorney has. Not saying that attorneys aren't coming in and visiting their clients, they are. A great deal are choosing to do it from their office through Zoom. And so we have to man that. So this goes to us taking them out of the module and downstairs to a area. So that has become popular. We work with closely with the sheriff's office. When they are not able to get somebody to the prison quick or because they've worked with security transports, we're taking people to Valeo. We're taking people to, to their treatment. We're taking people numerously every day to the hospital. And just last week, we had three. The other night, we had four posts in the hospital alone, which requires that, and that was eight staff just at the hospital for us. So our transports are going up and the number of cases with the DA talks about, not only are they having to prosecute the case, we have to take them. So we need to add to those areas. The other three areas in that, that goes along that is the maintenance. We're asking for a maintenance supervisor and we're asking for two maintenance people to go along with this. This facility has added on, was built for about 200 inmates when it opened in 98, or 88, 1988. We have not added to the maintenance staff at all since this facility. We've added on the annex, we've added on the new addition, we've added on the juvenile detention center, we've added on a food service area, and now we're adding on another 60-bed facility. And we will get to 60 beds at some point. We have to add to our maintenance staff to take care of the, not only the ongoing issues that we have at the Department of Corrections, but to manage the facility. But we do know that if we can, we know that that 30 with the corrections specialists that go into that area, that may be an area that we need to adjust, maybe end up, if we just have two, maybe we look at 20 instead of 30. But the detention budget is a 16.9% increase, which is the numbers we have from audit finance. All of that is due to the staffing in that area. The last is the trustee area, which was about a 10% increase. That is to add trustees that we have that the crews are being asked to come out more. And also, we have inmates that we pay and there are porters to cut down a custodial staff that are in the modules cleaning and we're asking for an increase. And I think that was close to about $10,000 in that budget. But that's such a small budget, that's why it shows as a 10% increase. For Community Corrections, we're asking for $216,000. Community Corrections is, we are mandated by state statute to match the grants that we get from Kansas Department of Corrections. With the 216, this solely goes to maintaining the salaries and the increases they get and for, and as with detention, 27 pay periods instead of 26. But the 216 gets us to write about 50% match from Shawnee County, in about 50, yeah, 50. And the 216 is just strictly to the maintenance of the wages and increases that they receive. For CIP, we only have three requests for 2016. One of them is a security upgrade that we ask every year. That is $75,000. One of them is for inmate transport vehicle. Some of our vehicles are antiquated or have several miles on it. One of the things that I want to work with Major Phelps, who's over our finance area, and Jennifer, is that if we do have the funds this year, we might try to see if we can purchase that vehicle with this year's funds, get that done, and we would not have to ask for a vehicle in 2026. The last one is about $55,000 to connect and upgrade the fire detection and suppression system. Is it detection and suppression? Just detection? System in the workshop of the, where the inmates store all of their equipment thing. That was for some reason disconnected when we got the building and we disconnected it and that has not been there for many years. That is a safe hazard not to have a fire detection system inside of the, a major building of the facility. I can get long-winded, you know that. But this year's 26 solely surrounds the opening of the behavioral health facility, the staffing, the staffing that goes along with that and the maintenance staff. Everything else was flat. There are a few things that increased when it came to food service or healthcare because of outside medical responses and stuff like that for outside or offsite medical care. But I stand for any questions you have and I have our team here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yes, Chair. With this mental health module, you, I know the state helped, they were gracious in helping pay for this facility. Do you see any increases or some help from the state as far as helping with, with maintenance of this facility, staffing, utilities, things like that?
Well, there's a couple of things with the maintenance of the facilities. We still have, I want to say in our back pocket that Major Phelps is staying on them and we've had a lot of help from Commissioner Mays. We still have and are waiting to see if there's going to be a $2 million grant that is going to be requested and we're hoping to hear something in October. That's why Jennifer and Tim are working with KBS on holding off any of those expenses that can, which could be HVAC, can be a lot of those different things that go to the maintenance. Anything that can be painful from this grant, we are waiting to see after October. So we're waiting to hear from that. There was a change in offices from La Turner to Schmidt and that basically I felt we had to really start all over. So they put that in the request. So we're all working with that. Major Tim Phelps and I also tried to be a little proactive. We did meet with staff secretary and deputy secretaries, Brunner and Andrew Brown regarding the possibility of seeking assistance with staffing, with the programming and stuff like that, of helping us fund the staffing. And one of the things that they, they did tell us, they didn't give us a guarantee, but they did talk to us about our facility being, accepting other inmates from other facilities, which that's a whole different conversation. But looking at the program, they did, they were, I want to use the right word, they were encouraging on talking to us about the ability to work with us on the potential. And I did try to talk to them, the possibility of at least a million or a million and a half for two years to help us to offset, which would be about half that.
Sorry, I was just going to put it, just because we've talked about numbers of people, but just to put a dollar value on what those additional mental health staff costs. The total amount of the 36 new positions, including benefits, is $3,286,830 per year. So it is very sizable. That's a large chunk of the increase in the detention facility. And then Community Corrections, it's 216,000 salary plus benefits, which would bring us to about 229,000. So those are the new, are the shift in funding and then the new people for the mental health dollars.
And you do have our commitment that we're going to look for the CIP. If there's things that we can pay this year, we'll do it and not ask for anything for 2026. And if we get to the point to where Major Phelps says, look, it doesn't look like we're going to, it's not going to be responsible to ask for 30, then I think we need to come back and work with Jennifer and say, we have to lower that by 10. I think that would be the responsible, and that's almost a million dollars right there. So we are open to all this, but this is something that we've already started the competency restoration, I believe. We did see, I believe, about three that they were screening. Do you remember that? There's about three. We're working still with Valeo on getting that. We're doing that in other areas of the facility, but this is where this is going to be. We anticipate or I'm pushing that we'll have a, to get the beds at least paid for and everything done, there'll be a contract for that, looking for, to get that done for the third floor, to be able to have that fully enclosed and we can all start having our stakeholders, our people from the Shawnee County Federal delegation and state to come to us and start touring the facility and getting a, an idea of what the facility is going to look like. I'm excited about what they're doing. There's a lot of other facilities that are calling us, asking for tours and wanting, you know, how we're maintaining and how we're looking at that. And I'm happy to say with staffing and things like that, that we are doing very well with that as well.
Thank you.
So I stand for any other questions you may have.
So for the personnel, I mean, 30 people aren't just going to come from, you know, the sky. We're not going to have, I mean, it's, it's hard to hire people right now for vacancies to post 30 correctional specialists or especially to work in a behavioral health unit. It's going to be difficult to find all those people. Is that, I mean, when we're looking at this, this is assuming that you're fully staffed on day one, right?
Yes.
The, I mean, this budget request. And so what's, is there a plan of attack there?
Yes. Our plan is, is that, and I'm glad you brought that up, Director Angela Lewis is there. That was one of the first questions she asked us, was is, is that if we want, we kind of approached this last time when we started getting close to where we had those other vacancies there. What we did is we worked with Betty and we worked with Jennifer. This time I would work with Angela and I work with Jennifer. We would like to, if our request is approved, to be able to start hiring now with the funds that we have in our facility that we might have later in the year, maybe in the last quarter, to be able to start hiring to increase those staffing numbers. So we know we, I want to say this, I don't know for sure, we're going to really try to, we have about 17 in our process right now and we only have about 10 vacancies. So right now is that I would like to be able to look at if the projections of our budget does look good and I, you know, anything can happen with the unpredictability with medical and things like that. We would like to work with Angela, who's talked to us about attacking this now in the fourth quarter of start hiring people, that we can have them on board, have them through the academy, have them trained, have them certified, meaning they've gone through our two areas of training to where we can start filling those positions when we do open that facility.
And do you anticipate transitioning a number of the folks that are already there into this unit?
Yes. What we're hoping is, and that's a good point in that, you know, this stresses me out because I'm worried about what we can do. And the team I have has reassured me that we're going to be able to close and hopefully because one floor is going to be dedicated to suicide watch. Well, we have like four or five suicide watch officers throughout the whole facility. That's going to collapse and be able to go into this facility. So there are going to be some areas that we are going to, we're going to have to collapse and use it. But we're talking about the safety and security strictly of just outside of that. But yes, there are going to be areas that, some posts we're going to be able to close down. It gets to the point, like yesterday, we had 23 people on suicide watch, which is very high. Well, this facility will only have 20. So that means I'm still going to have three in another area. I also have to look at somebody who might be extremely combative, somebody with dementia that's there, that may not be in this area just because of overflow. But right now, yesterday, I had 23. And so we're hoping that we, working with our behavioral health unit and our behavioral health team, we can continue to keep the numbers under 20 on suicide watch so we can keep those posts closed. But yes, to answer your question, yes, we're going to be, we're going to, yes.
Okay.
And we're going to lock down as many modules. I don't know right now, we're doing a lot of the doors, but if our population, we have seen an increase, it is over 500 now, we were able to lock down modules. If we're able to relocate and our classification staff and with Major Rucker and, you know, Major McCarty has been very influential in that, is that we're going to look at our population and if we're able to combine populations, take 20 here and 20 here and put them in one module where we have modules closed, then we'll do that to reduce posts as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair. A question.
I'm going to stand for your question.
Okay.
We're being told it's time to stand.
Very respectful.
Sorry.
We are being told that it is time to stand for a few minutes, so.
All right. Could you remind us again when your plan on opening the mental health?
We're hoping, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring Tim up. He's the project manager. I don't want to give something out that I don't.
I'll mess it up.
It was that we are scheduled to open on April 26, April of 2026. With this change of purchasing the cells, which is, we're going to be putting that contract here on the commission's agenda center. That might push it 30 to 60 days because they have to now build those cells after we tell them we're going to buy them. So we're still going to push to hit the April date, but it's going to have to be because we save some time somewhere. So that's where that's sitting right now.
Okay. One other question, it's a toss-up. How many, how many staff members do you have right now that would you consider being trained for this facility, could move over there immediately?
Well, I would say not 100%, but I would say over the last few years, all of the new hires have been trained in CIT. So we have a great deal of people that have trained in the CIT. We just paid the money to have somebody be a certified trainer. We just paid the money to have somebody be a certified trainer in mental health, first aid, and so that's going to be started right now. Some, we don't have anybody that's fully trained to walk in there today with both of those two trainings. We do have staff that if we had to, we're confident we could find the staff. If it was open today, that we could find the staff and get them caught up on the training they needed.
Okay.
Then they start the process, Commissioner, of identifying those who have an interest in working within that facility and maybe have enough years under their belt to understand what they're dealing with, and then we can start specializing focus on those folks, make sure they have both those trainings in time.
But this is a tremendous effort, even from our, one of the values that, and I think Major Willis would say, one of the major values that we've seen with community corrections coming back under the Department of Corrections, is a great deal of their staff are coming over and are starting to do and to help our staff with programming, because some of our inmates do go over to ISP, and so there is a continuity of care and transition there. So that has been a valuable asset to have that in-house.
Real quick, the, our medical contract, do we anticipate any changes to that with the addition of the new facility?
The, probably the simplest answer to that is that we have already made an amendment that allows them to use an increase in hours of their psychiatrist or competency restoration. So that's already in place. Otherwise, we won't need them to specifically be increasing or changing their approach to their mental health work. We'll just move physically over to a new location and maybe make that a little more efficient because it'll be a more concentrated population.
Okay. So the prescribing and things that are happening now are going to continue to happen, they'll just be in the new building instead of the old?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Further questions? All right, let's sit down then. All right, thank you. Next up is the sheriff's office.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brian Hill with Shawnee County Sheriff's Office. I have a brief presentation here we'll go through. So this is a slide that represents our activity throughout Shawnee County, our proactive policing initiatives. There's been approximately an 87% increase of our arrests for illegal firearms, narcotics, and property crimes since 2018. Our major crimes as a direct result of that have declined, and our strategic field operations and targeted enforcement are actually delivering measurable amounts that you'll be able to see here as we go through the slides. This has been our Part 1 crime slides. Like to notice when our real-time crime center was activated here in 2024, we've seen a significant increase in recovery of stolen vehicles and wanted fugitives as a result of that. Here's another breakdown of motor vehicle thefts, burglaries, and thefts from vehicles, which I think show a significant decline. And this is our, just a picture of the real-time crime center. Currently, we have one person that works there full-time. We've been staffing the field operations with extra manpower on the road or when officers are available. We have just recently posted the second operations deputy for the real-time crime center. So I'd like to thank you gentlemen for that. Those are the two positions that I've asked for in the last budget cycle that we've been able to fill out here. We've been a little slow just because of turnover within the agency. We've had to train people and get them out on the street, so we have to fill up patrol before we can move them into specialty units and not run patrol short. We're also getting a lot of interaction with the community. Currently, there's approximately 896 registered cameras of people who voluntarily registered their cameras, also within the community. Every county school is either on or working to come onboard. Washburn University is onboard, and 501, I've been working with them, and they are trying to bring their schools onboard for the public safety aspects of this, so I'm pretty excited about that. I think there's a number in here, we currently have 1,318 integrated cameras throughout Shawnee County and Topeka. This is just a breakdown of our operational expenses. And here's a slide that's got a lot of information on it. We have a increase that's substantial from our ass from last year to this year. Most of that is due to the payroll increases, 12.75% of that overall increase of the budget is that. I think our team done a really good job of working to keep our operational budget underneath the inflation rate. As you can see, increases 1.75% from last year's budget. We've got a few items in CIP. You know, as you know, Shawnee County is a big county, over 556 square miles. Our fleet drives 1.8 billion miles per year roughly, and again, we ask for the 10 vehicles just to keep the fleet up and operational as we move forward. Currently, lifespans of our vehicles, approximately eight years, averaging 135,000 miles as we try to trade them in. Our range refresh, actually, our range targeting system has probably passed the end of their life. We patch them together, and this is a system that we use for officers to do the interactive training that's needed to keep people operational and functional with the real-time situations that they honestly engage with every day out on the street. The estimated cost to totally replace that system is $200,000. And anticipating the potential move of the garage over to the new building when available. They've estimated that to be $100,000 to be able to pick up and move over there and make that an operational place to start off with. Again, that's an estimate, but that money would be spent on things that should be moved from this whole place to be replaced. And finally, the scanning machines that we use at the courthouse, they've reached the end of life, and this is cost to replace those two, and those are paramount for courthouse security, for our people to keep weapons out of that courthouse every day when people pass through there, so. And I will stand for any questions, and I have some individuals here that can help out if we need to.
So on the, just on the metal detectors or x-ray machines, it looked like you have two different models there. Is there a reason why we wouldn't just do two of the same or?
I'm sure there is, and he's going to come up.
And as you know, two different x-ray machines, one's at the east entrance, one's at the main entrance, just for scanning the packages. It has to have a bigger machine down at the east entrance for all the packages that come into the courthouse. That side, a machine for the front entrance.
Any questions?
In the past, typically, we had two officers that would be working at the front desk, the front entrance of the Shawnee County courthouse. In the last year, we've added four new people that are staffing that in addition to an additional officer. So commonly, we'll have seven people now where we had two. Was there a reason we increased the staffing that much? And four of them don't appear to be sheriff's officers as much as they're assisting.
Well, we did add civilian staffing up there, mostly because we were short-staffed with, actually, people even being able to take time off and cover what was needed over there. We've added details, when we moved over here, we've added roving patrols and trying to do more coverage out and about here. And we've also combined offender registration, moving them over there. Now, that's something we are currently looking at and doing, just work assessments to see if we can maybe move some of that manpower to somewhere else that'd be functional within the sheriff's office, but that's predominantly the reason.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. So that's the end of our first half.
Our first session is over.
Should we take a break real quick and then come back at 10:30?
Yes.
I don't think anyone's going to be here for the 10:30.
We will stand at ease for 15, 20 minutes until we get everybody here.
Looking at, we had that tier two issue for hazardous materials that are in our community and then the LEPC Local Marty Planning Committee. During the course of the year, as we've discussed and it's pretty well known, some of these grants that we have relied on for 20-plus years are not going to come back around to us, it doesn't look like. We've been talking to our partners at the state and federal levels and the one, in particular, the one we've counted on, the EMPG, does not look like it's going to come back up, come back around to us. That's been between 93 and 103,000 per year and that paid for a planner position. We did not hire that planner when we are, our past planner went on to bigger and better things for him. And so we let that position open up and covering it for the most part. And we've ended up bringing on a EM specialist to basically mentor and groom into that position. So we had somebody who was very well adept of how we do business in Shawnee County as a whole. That position was filled and it's been working tremendously well. The new, now the planner position that was covered under the EMPG is now shown under the county. So we're requesting that position, the vacant planner position you see on the right-hand side of that screen. And then the new position that we've talked about was tier two and there's what they do, it's a subject matter expert. This is a part-time or intermittent position specifically to do that tier-two task and that is identifying, plotting, doing all the hazards associated with those facilities in our community that have hazards in case it was an accidental release or otherwise. So identifying those and making plans and preparing for worst-case scenario there. That planner position again was covered by the grant, it is not now, we're requesting that the county cover that. That goes directly into basically all the plans that we've been doing for years. While I'm, we're kind of covering it, all of it, but we still have some gaps and there's been some adjustments going, going forward. As you know, at the national level, it makes it incredibly difficult for us to build a strategic plan on what's out there because we don't know what's coming at us as far as if FEMA is going to be around or what that's going to look like as it develops at the national level and the triple bound as well and how it's going to look. The only thing we do know is we've heard repeatedly across the board is we're going to rely on the locals, the locals, the locals, or we're the locals. We know what's in our community and we are hard-pressed to, to cover all those tasks that we're, we're being asked to cover it right now to, to do that. So that's the reason for these positions request. So our budget, if you see these increases, this is the adjustments and I have, Scott can stand up, I misspeak here because he works directly with finance on some of these things. But the planner position, you can see most of our increase is from personnel, the MSA one, whether it's increase in wages and then adding these other two positions, then the increases. We did some adjusting down below, it looks like a hundred dollar increase total, but some of those were membership dues and so forth that have adjusted, so we've adjusted as well. And then the MSA three, that 1,400 increase and you can see what's over there. Those licenses, licenses have decreased as well, so that, that was an adjustment as well. But our overall budget increase to include both positions would be 138,646. So if you have any questions, I could stand for that, but that's pretty much our budget request for this year. Questions?
If FEMA was to disband immediately, the impact to you and your mission, do we still work with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management?
It depends on what the state would do because that would adjust the National Incident Management System, it would adjust. There would be lots of, I don't know how to explain it. There'd be lots of things that need to be addressed and if it's done immediately and it's just a looking overnight shift, I, the only thing I know for sure is that we'd have people to respond to and do whatever we've done in the past. I don't know what that would, I don't know what it would look like going up. That's, that's kind of the catch right, right now.
Okay. Where does our Shawnee County CERT program stand today? Are we rebuilding it?
Yes, in fact, one of our CIP requests is for EOC CERT, doing some of the stuff with them as well. But it is being rebuilt. We just had a, a class last year, we're looking at another class, we had a meeting this last week trying to keep people engaged. We're doing things very deliberately because of the lack of funding because that grant had dried up years ago as well. So we are looking at how to do things with what we have and getting the ideas from the CERT numbers have been, has been beneficial as well. What do they want to do? What do they want to see? So we could stay better engaged, I guess, with each part of the community that the CERT belongs to.
Okay.
I was just going to say, in addition to the FEMA situation that Dusty was talking about, there is also a, another layer of that issue and we're going to see that a couple of times on our grants because a lot, like Dusty's grant is a pass-through from the state as well as a lot of our health department grants are pass-throughs from the state. And in addition to the federal cuts, the state has also done a one and a half percent cut. And so although I think what Dusty saw in his documentation was that even though they lost funding from FEMA, the grant last year, the one they estimated how much was going to go out was going to be instead of a nine percent cut, it was going to be a 10.1% cut.
We were going to see decreases in that grant either way. And we made those, we made those adjustments based on that anticipation. This, on the other hand, is a whole nother animal.
Is a, is a whole, is just a complete slice.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, are there any questions about the ambulance, me, this contract?
The, I don't believe it is actually settled at this point. The budget that we, that was present or that's, that we included in our budget is under the assumption that we have to take on the full $60,000 of nurse nav. That might have a, a decrease, but that is why the increase went from 380,000 to 440. So that was 100% nurse nav. And we just put it in there as a reminder that that could be coming.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nelson, Cassie, I'm his client. That's what I've briefed Jennifer and Kyle and the chair on briefly today. We're still working with John Antrim to work out some pricing schemes for that based on the executive session we had a couple of months ago to move forward with seeing what we could do with that. So I do know that in talking to John, they may be looking for efficiencies to see if they can bring that price down. They're also, we're also going to be looking for some partnerships. We've seen quite a turnover in the medical facilities here in Shawnee County in, in recent weeks, so we might be having to start some of those relationships over, but John and I are staying in regular contact on it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's hear from Safe Streets.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mandy Chikansky, Executive Director at Prevention and Resiliency Services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about our Safe Streets program. Last year, when I was before you, I introduced the new initiative we were working on called Block Talks and I just wanted to give you a little update about what we've done with that within Safe Streets over the past year. Block Talks is a grassroots initiative aimed at fostering community connections and enhancing neighborhood cohesion. The program encourages residents to gather informally on their blocks, porches, yards, et cetera, to engage in meaningful conversations about their community, share concerns and brainstorm solutions. The idea is to create a relaxed and familiar setting where neighbors can discuss issues related to safety, health, and overall well-being, thereby building trust and solidarity. By empowering residents to take an active role in shaping their environment, our program seeks to promote a sense of ownership and collective responsibility, ultimately contributing to a safer and more connected community. This past year, the foundational phase of Block Talks was marked, we are still early in the process, but the momentum and community response has been powerful. We successfully launched and sustained Block Talks in a couple of neighborhoods, serving as pilot sites for the program's long-term vision. These blocks have become local hubs of trust-building, safety conversations, and access to critical resources. These started as small gatherings and have evolved into consistent, community-led efforts where neighbors are stepping into leadership roles and showing what's possible when support meets lived experience. The Block Talks were designed to care, with care, and are centered around belonging, reducing barriers to participation, and creating space for honest, often difficult conversations. Our trauma-informed approach was important when helping residents feel safe, heard, and supported, specifically around topics like neighborhood violence and disconnection. At our resource connection events, we've partnered with local organizations to connect residents with services like housing assistance, mental health support, youth programming, food access. These weren't just conversations, they were actionable, solution-focused gatherings that provided tangible help. One of the most powerful outcomes has been reconnection among neighbors. Community members who hadn't spoken to each other in years are now checking in, sharing resources, and looking out for one another. That kind of connection lays the groundwork for long-term violence prevention and community resilience. I could go into more, but we are requesting the same budget as last year, no increases. And if you'd like me to go into future goals, I'm happy to do that, but we appreciate your continued support and the opportunity to work with outstanding partners at the county. Ever County, County Agency that we've interacted with has been super supportive and helpful and we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. I think we might be ahead of schedule now, guys. Next up would be the Stormont Vale Event Center.
No pressure, Helen.
I'll go real quick. Good morning, Commissioners. Helen says Stormont Vale Event Center. What you will find in our budget proposal this year is pretty consistent with what we saw, or excuse me, for next year, is pretty consistent with what we saw this year. We are, however, anticipating a pretty big increase in total operating revenues and direct event income, primarily from the addition of the Topeka Scarecrows up PHL Hockey League and some additional events, new first-time events for us this year. Those include Showtime Events Volleyball Tournament. That is a volleyball tournament that will play on the new modular sports flooring surfaces in January. It's going to be about 120 to 130-team tournament in early January. We also won back the contract for Equifest for the next three years, so that comes back to the building this January 2026 through 2028. We also have the NAI National Cheer and Dance Competition in March for both 2026 and 27. As you're well aware, we renewed the contract with Kansas Kids Wrestling for the next five years, so that's back in March. So we are anticipating direct event income to increase in 2026 over 2025 by about $221,000. So a pretty big jump in expected revenue. However, indirect expense increase for 2026 is, is kind of following that same pace. A couple of those things are, you know, the major increases being utility cost, utility costs with the operation of the ice plant and then insurance premiums continuing to rise. That accounts for about $89,000 of an indirect increase for us next year. And then our capital outlay request this year is increased by another $50,000 to absorb some additional capital investments we'll need for the hockey production. And that includes things like our ice plant compressor rebuild. We do one of those every year. There are three compressors for the ice plant. We haven't rebuilt or had the need to rebuild one of those since we had our last hockey tenant team, so we are anticipating the need to do that following the end of the 25, 26 season, but prior to the beginning, or excuse me, prior to the start of the 26, 27 season, which would hit that 26-year.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
On the insurance, can you go back to that for just a second?
Yeah.
Because Shawnee, what insurance are you referring?
That's going to be benefits and payroll liability insurance.
Okay, personal insurance, definitely. I just wanted to make sure we weren't double budgeting property insurance.
Correct. Yep. So we, we are anticipating producing better revenues and, and doing better from an event revenue standpoint and a revenue standpoint for the facility as a whole, but those indirect expenses are, are kind of running pace with a lot of those increases. So you will see a slight increase in our budget request for this year, or for 2026. I did also want to touch on really quickly where we're sitting for 2025. And I apologize on, on some of the tardiness for this, but we did just release our financial packet for the month of April. We're currently operating ahead of budget or with positive budget variance of about $135,000 at the end of April. So we're sitting in a pretty good position, much better than we have been in the last, you know, couple of years. So we, we look for that trend to continue. You know, and we're excited about 2026, but there are some increased expenses that go along with hockey production next year.
Have we gotten the new Zamboni yet?
I believe we did. I believe we received it last week and it went to Heritage Tractor to get some servicing done on it, but yes, it, it is in Topeka.
Did we get anything for the old one?
We are, we are keeping the old one for at least through this first season, just to have a redundancy and a backup. We got a great deal on the new unit out of Minnesota, I believe it was. I think Matt presented that to you, our Director of Operations. But yeah, that, that unit has about a third of the hours that our current unit has on it and it's about 15 years newer, so should expect to see a much better production out of that piece of equipment for the season this year.
Okay. And then I know that we had, I don't see it on your CIP, but we had had discussions a while back about the dashboard system and how that's
Yeah.
Pretty, also pretty old and
Yeah.
Might need to be replaced at some point.
Some of that we are planning to take care of out of the capital outlay funding through our annual budget and those things include, we, we plan to drill out and core out all of the anchors. There are some of the anchors or the vast majority of those anchors that are in there are aluminum, which are corroding. So we need to core those out, drill those out, replace them with stainless. But you're right, there are some capital investment opportunities that we would look at for the coming years, which would include a new dam, a dasher dam system that is basically the, the polycarbonate plastic that goes down on top of the concrete flooring surface that retains the water inside the playing surface. We do, it is, it's currently working now, but it, it needs some love. Additional elements there are the, the yellow border across the bottom of the dasher system and that yellow border is basically just to keep the cup, the puck in play during hockey play. That could be replaced. Those are some of the things that we're looking to do utilizing the capital outlay funding request, both from 2026 and some of the capital outlay funds that we currently have for, for 2025.
Okay.
But a full replacement.
Helen?
Yeah.
The group that's going to present next is the Fair Association and they got a lot of complaints. And they've been making a lot of complaints year after year about the Stormont Vale Event Center. So might as well just rip the Band-Aid off before they even get up here to make their complaints. Do we have to require them to have a, a passcode, every security check? I mean, is this something policy just wise that we're just the state of the world that we're in?
Yeah. I'm, yes and no. I think we, I'm not sure if you've already met with, the Fair Board has already met with Josh. She indicated to me that he was going to meet with them to talk through that process, but we are going to make a concession on that for, for the fair moving forward where we don't have the use of the security checkpoint at the exhibition hall entry, which would reduce the amount of staffing costs that it then is charged back to the Fair Board. There are a number of other things we're trying to do as well. We brought in this year the PBR event, which is tracking right now on pace and selling well, similar to what our New Year's Eve Bulls event does. And that should be a pretty good revenue-producing event for us, the way it's, the way it's forecasting out right now. In addition to that, at New Year's Eve Bulls, we did a 50/50 raffle with the Fair Board Association and their members where they sell raffle tickets that are then drawn during the event and, and the association keeps half of that revenue or 4H or whoever they designate to, to produce that revenue for. And we'll be doing that again with the PBR event on July 26th. So we're, we're trying to introduce elements that help grow some revenue segments for the Fair Board. I understand there are significant expenses in hosting an event, especially for the length of time that it is hosted there for three to four days and the staffing costs associated with that. So we are going to be eliminating that magnetometer pass-through security checkpoint for the fair this year and probably for the years to come.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, next up is the Fair Association.
Hello, I'm George Wilcox and I'm Fair Board Treasurer. And in our budget, this year we've come up with total projected expenses 129,400, but we're requesting 108,000. We're trying to continue promoting 4H and make an enjoyable atmosphere for all the 4Hers and the families. And we have a board president and Ashley here also.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ashley Mingurelli. Hi, I'm back. Another Fair Board member. This is my fourth year on the Fair Board. Some events that we're having this year, well, I guess one of the big things is we have a new website this year. Last year, we're having issues getting our website updated. Our website is up and we are doing a lot of promotion to get community members to come and be in participation at the fair, advertising all of the open classes that we have, photography, horticulture, Legos, all, the Legos are big with the kids. So we have all the different areas. We're trying to get community members in and be present. We're also with that trying to get community organizations involved to help be sponsors for different events. Some fun things we have this year, we are having a touch-a-truck event on Friday morning. The Shawnee County Dump Truck, the new one, will be present at that. I've been told. We have other county organizations such as Evergy. Ag Partners are bringing in different ag poultry equipment. The Stormont Vale Event Center Zamboni is going to be featured there as well. So there are a bunch of others that we're still working out with. Hopefully Wildlife and Parks will be able to bring their airboat. That was a big hit the last time. We'll have bounce houses again this year, which is always a kid favorite. However, this year, the Seaman FFA will be using it as a fundraising opportunity for their organization, so they will be the ones actually running the event because Fair Board members are running around working on all the other projects. So we are excited to have them come and partner with us this year. Our watermelon feed will be back. This year will be sponsored by Stock Grower State Bank and that will be on Friday evening. It will be, watermelon will be sliced and handed out to all of fair attendees and 4Hers until it's gone. I think we have 20 coming, so if you want some free watermelon, nice cold chill, come and see us. On Saturday, the Shawnee County Farm Bureau will be hosting their pedal pull. Registration starts at 1:00, the pull is at 2:00. It's always a big hit as well. Saturday morning, we have the Shawnee County Pancake Feed, which is a 4H event that is the only county fundraiser that the Shawnee County 4H does. It provides opportunities for 4Hers to help going to camp. It helps with, it helps them raise money for like the, in any event, the county like being in parades. It helps with all 4H promotion and events that they do. The PBR is a big, the Bull Riding is a big event this year. We're very excited about that. The 50/50 raffle will be something that the 4H Events Council will also be helping Fair Board with. Really this year, like I said earlier, we're trying to encourage and get advertising of open class to increase public participation. The Fair Board continues to dream big and we have a lot of opportunities that we have ideas for, but with contracts the way they are, we still feel like there's events that we can't host because of the contract restrictions that we're under, things that we think people would really enjoy coming to the fair, like food trucks and those types of things. We really feel like we're limited on what we can do. So, but we are excited about our event this year. I'm going to let Cooper, really quick.
I'm Cooper Mingurelli. I'm a member of the INC 4H Club and also a member of the Shawnee County Fair Board Youth Committee. And I was coming here today to ask you guys if you would like to come to the Shawnee County Pancake Feed as I have brought tickets for you.
Fantastic.
I'm always up for pancakes. Thank you.
Something I do, throwing in on the pancake feed, our club is also the, one of the committees that I guess is on that. So the cool thing about the pancake feed is the kids go out and they find all sponsorships for the pancake feed. So it is 100% profit for the kids. So last year, this is an example of the sponsorships that they had. So they make placemats that have all of our community sponsors. So it's really cool to see the community supporting these kids and the 4H program. And you see a wide variety of them. There's individuals as well as big businesses and small businesses and there's different sponsorship levels, but the kids go out in person and speak to all of our sponsors pre asking for sponsorships and then afterwards thanking them for their continued sponsorship. So we feel it's very important as Fair Board and on the 4H side that we get the community involved in this community event that we're putting on, so.
All right. Great. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. We hope to see you at the fair.
All right. Next up, Parks and Rec.
You have one hour.
Use it wisely.
Tim Laurent, Parks Recreation Director. I brought some staff with me today too. I've got our accounting team back there, Josh Lehman and Jessica Childs, our administrative superintendent Eric Van Beesler, recreation superintendent Josh Mikey, park superintendent John Bell, and deputy director Jess Rakestraw, because it takes that many people to keep me in line and answer the questions that you might have. So I'm going to jump right into this. I did not anticipate having a full hour to do my presentation, so I tried to cut out as much fluff as possible. So I'm going to jump right into the budget. This is our executive summary here, essentially our 2026 request, our current budget amounts. You can see that's a little over a million-dollar increase at, at 6.1%. That does include personnel and, and then operations and infrastructure. So we'll try to break that down and sort of let you know where we are and what we're trying to do here. Really, the increase boils down to those three main areas, maintenance, utility rate increases, and some program enhancements. If you look at, I'd like to start with utility rate increases. Since 2024, the utility rates have increased for Evergy, City of Topeka Water, and Kansas Gas Service. You can see the percentages, although maybe you can't, that's pretty small. Evergy, 8.6%. Topeka Water, 11.8%. And Kansas Gas Service, 10.4%. So we didn't really account for that in 2025. We're trying to account for it in 2026. So that is a, that's a bump. In our maintenance area, back up to the top, that, a lot of that is our mowing contracts. So we did do new mowing contracts last year that began this year and then they increase yearly. So some of that is contractual. We, we also are going to have some facility expenses for the new maintenance compound on Kansas Street, the Florence property. We have, still haven't come up with a great name for it, so we're, we're working on it. But Wi-Fi, security, those sorts of things that we are anticipating. So that's that. And then under program enhancement, really the largest portion of that is, that's maybe a little bit misleading, but the biggest portion of that is credit card fees. We, I have a slide later on revenue and our revenue is doing well. Our programs are, you know, we've spent a lot of time over the last three, four years reorganizing and really focusing on recreation programming and that's starting to pay off. Our revenues are, are expanding, but because of that, so are our credit card fees. You know, we don't pass that cost on to the consumer, we pay that. So we're asking for about, I think that's around $95,000, somewhere in that range of this one. I have a slide later on revenue, and our revenue is doing well. Our programs are, you know, we've spent a lot of time over the last three, four years reorganizing and really focusing on recreation programming, and that's starting to pay off. Our revenues are expanding, but because of that, so are our credit card fees. You know, we don't pass that cost on to the consumer, we pay that. So we're asking for about, I think that's around $95,000, somewhere in that range of this $128 is that, trying to account for credit card fees. The rest of that, there's another, I know $10,000 in that category, that is for Topeka Civic Theater contract. So we have an agreement with them to run our summer camps and run a summer camp and the Helen Hawker Theater Program. And they, if they go over their budget, then we're on the hook for paying that. If they are under budget, then we get some of that money back. Historically, they've been over budget more than under budget. So they requested additional funding moving forward. We are prepared to, or we're asking to raise that agreement by $10,000 annually. So that's part of that area as well. Guys, if you have questions at any time, please, you know, interrupt. I was speaking about revenue, so our general fund revenue, we're anticipating about a 14% growth over our 2024 actuals. So you can see we're getting up to $2.7 million as our projected revenue. Most of that is in our outdoor adventure area, which consists of all of our youth and adult sports, all of our aquatics programming, which is the biggest chunk of that. The community program is sort of everything else, special events and fitness and some of those types of programs, so. But they're all growing. Down below that, our revolving fund, revolving fund operations, which as you know are self-supporting, our golf operations, we're projecting it to continue to go up, that's 34% over 2024. You know, a lot of that has to do too though with us taking over operations last year, so it's a little skewed. Youth summer camps, 8.5%, and then campground operations. So things are going well on the revenue front. That's all I really put together for budget. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have about what I've talked about before I jumped into the CIP information. Yeah?
Can I clarify, because I think what you're saying on the credit card fees as well as the revenue, is one of the things that we cleaned up this year in 2024 was instead of showing a net expense on revenues, where we just back, where we net the revenues that are coming in, we split those apart to show the true expense for the credit card fees as well as the true revenue for the operations. So that was just something we had to do from an accounting aspect, and that's something that Parks and Rec helped us put into place over the last year. So both of them are higher. I don't know that there's been a skyrocketing increase in the fees that we have for credit cards, it's just been that we are recognizing the true expense of those.
You're right, you're absolutely right, although there has been an increase. But you're right, that doesn't account for that full amount.
Yes, it's been a smaller increase, yeah.
We, I will tell you that we are contemplating maybe making some changes in that area and trying to possibly pass some of those fees on to the folks that are, that are choosing to use their credit cards and debit cards to pay for these services. We met with, just had a preliminary meeting with another service provider that, that does recreation software. We currently use Civic Rec, we have a meeting with another group, and Civic Rec might be able to do this as well, but they proposed a slightly different model where we sort of picked and choose which programs we wanted to pass that on to. If you're rolling in swimming lessons, for example, your kids in swimming lessons, maybe we don't pass the fee on to that, because we feel like that's an important, not only is it, it's an important service, you know, it saves lives ultimately to get your kids in there and teach them how to swim. So we don't really want to make that more expensive or harder for people to do. But if you want to, you know, take private gymnastics lessons, you know, or something like that, that would really only affect a few people, yeah, I think they could probably pay for that fee, or even just adult programming in general. So those are some of the things that we're thinking about to try to maybe lessen that in the future. Any other questions there before I get into CIP? All right. So this is pretty similar to what we had, I believe, last year. We've just moved everything back a year. There are a few probably additions, but I'm just going to go through 2026 real quick. $350,000 for parks and playgrounds, that's primarily for Garfield Park, Shawnee North Park, and Nana Park. Garfield and Shawnee North are really a couple of the, they're really the two biggest parks out there that we haven't touched, you know, since I've been here. We've done, we're really all over Topeka and Shawnee County, but those two locations are still in need of some love. So we've identified those as areas for 2026. Quad Field turf replacement is next for Bettis. You'll notice that number's a lot lower, that's $250,000. We are still actively working on a plan to make that number a reality by doing some sponsorship packages. We're working with, I won't throw names out there, but we are working with the Bettis family to make sure that what we're trying to do is okay with them, you know, that we've got a great relationship with Bettis, they have naming rights there. We want to make sure that we're honoring that contract and that they're on board with these things that we're trying to do. So we hope to get that down. I'd hope to have that news before I came up here today, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to get it done yet. Lake Shelter House Number Five, Lake Shawnee Shelter House Number Five is a new one. I don't know, it's, if you're familiar with which one that is, I should have put a picture up, but it's an open-air shelter, it's sort of long and narrow, it's right over by the boat house, the rowing house. It's in pretty bad shape, and it's to the point where we feel like, well, I feel like we'd be better off replacing it than trying to make repairs. There's a lot of concrete issues there, there's drainage issues, the roof's in bad shape. So we'd like to do something different there if possible. And, and that's it for 2026. And then, you know, we don't do anything after that until 2028, and I won't go through each of those, but I will touch on in 2028, the Swim Beach Parking Lot, that's the one right off of Croco, that, you know, we may end up doing something before 2028. It just depends on, on what we can do. The slides at MAC, I said I wouldn't touch on it, but I'm going to go ahead and do it. When you look at Midwest Health Aquatic Center Pool, we've got those beautiful slides, but they're starting to look pretty faded. And we have gotten some quotes just so we know what we're dealing with, and that was the quote that we got, so. So there's that. We've got a lot of things in this category, so I'll keep moving forward. We can come back to it if you have questions. So I'm just going to apologize right off the top for this slide, because I put all of this in 2026, it's a big number. I know it's not realistic, I know we're not going to do that. Fortunately, the media is no longer here, so they won't read the report. I guess they could watch this back. I really put all of these projects on here because by and large, there may be one on here that we haven't, maybe two that we haven't talked about at some point. So Family Park Phase Two, which is the Cypress Bridge Clubhouse and Dog Park additions. As you know, we have been talking with a gentleman who's contemplating making a fairly sizable donation to help get that golf clubhouse off the ground. We've got some preliminary plans drawn up, there's some conceptual plans and ideas, and, but we think that's, that's something that would be tremendous, definitely needed. We toured that clubhouse, and you guys know it's in bad shape, so, but that's a pretty big number there. The West Edge Road Mill and Overlay, that's been on here for quite some time now. We, I had it broken out in phases. I think we're getting to the point now where we really need to try to get it done at one time, you know, because every year, it's getting worse, continuing to get worse. Director Neathouse is not in here, so I will say I think Public Works would be great for that, you know. Don't quote me, don't. Yacht Club Replacement, that's a new one. So the Yacht Club Building is a very misleading title, if you've been to the Yacht Club, because that's not what you're thinking. I think it was an old portable classroom that they used during the tornadoes back here, and it got relocated to the lake. No restrooms, window, air conditioning unit. It's got a deck out front that's in bad shape. The Yacht Club is very interested in seeing something done. Several years ago, we did some preliminary plans on that as well, but that's something we think needs to happen. Shawnee North Community Center Replacement, that community center by far, I would say that one and Rice are pretty close, with this one maybe being just a little bit, in a little bit worse shape. It doesn't really function well as a, as a community center, it definitely doesn't function as a, what we would call a recreation center. Shawnee North Park is a gem, it really is. And we, we're working on some plans internally and talking to some external folks about doing some major improvements to those ball diamonds. And we know how great the pool is, and, and I asked, you know, earlier to do some work on the playground, but the one missing piece is that community center. So I think we could really do something special there, and it would be a tremendous addition for the folks that live up north and really everybody here in Topeka and Shawnee County. Grange Hall, that's been on here, that's, this is a slightly different number, and I know since I turned this in, Mr. Rippon and I have had some conversations where maybe we could even make some other changes, but we did get some designs done, we've paid for those designs. The Friends of Ward Mead have a sizable amount of money that they want to put into this project. So I think that's the worst-case scenario, that amount, to get something done with Grange Hall. This is a new one, Visitor Center at Old Prairie Town. We've got some preliminary designs done for it. I don't think Commissioner Rippon's totally in love with them, but they're preliminary, you know, we're going to, we'll do something, we'll make sure everybody's on board before we move forward. We do have a little bit of private money going into this. We have, we have somebody that's pledged $50,000, and I think the Friends Group, they have not made it official, but they're discussing sort of matching that pledge to try to get this project off the ground. I know that's not a lot of money, but it would definitely pay for some, some design work and things like that. I just want to touch on why I think that's important. I, you know, Old Prairie Town and Ward Mead Botanical Gardens are incredible, you know, and if you don't know anything about those two areas and you drive, you see the sign on the highway and you pull in the parking lot, there's nobody there to greet you. You don't know where to go, you don't know what it's about, you just got to hope that somebody sees you wandering around and grabs you and says, hey, yeah, welcome, you know, and gives you the tour. We do do tours, don't get me wrong. But it would be nice to have a location, an entry, you know, where everybody that came in, they walked in, they were greeted, they were given a little history of the facility, maybe a little map showing where to go. We have the ability to do self-guided tours, so they could, they could get that information. I think it would really enhance the customer experience for that site. So that and Grange Hall would be amazing additions. Dornwood, the ball diamonds at Dornwood. So we've been frankly, you know, to be frank, we've been messing around with this since before I got here. And we have made a lot of improvements, but we haven't finished it. You know, it's, it's, we've got a couple of ball diamonds that look great and everything's in order, and then we have several that aren't. So the lights are in terrible condition, the light poles are even in worse condition. We, I feel like we really need to get serious about this and decide either we're going to need to get this done or we're going to have to forget about it. You know, it's, some of the things to this point, quite honestly, and I don't say this lightly, I don't like saying this in a public meeting, but some of those things are getting to the point where we have some safety concerns, especially when you're talking about the light poles and the lights. They're in bad shape, so we really, we really need to try to get something done there. The last one, the renovating the Lake Shawnee Boat House Building, you know, it doesn't have to be done. The boat, the Rowing Association is using that facility. The last I, the last I heard, they've got roughly 30 to 35 boats in there. I don't know how many of those boats get moved, you know, I think there's some that are, people are using them on a regular basis, but a lot of them look like they've been sitting there for many, many years. It's in an incredible spot on the lake, just an incredible spot, and it's largely underused. If anybody from the Rowing Association is listening, I don't think this has to be they're out and we're renovating. I think we can make this work where they still get to be part of it, because frankly, I love that, the part of it, the rowboats, or the rowing boats and the way they look and the whole vibe, I think we could renovate that facility, keep some of it, you know, for them, and it would just add to the overall experience. So it's just an underutilized area of the lake that just continues really to sit there and sort of decay over time, so. So if you've got $36 million laying around, we could just do all of this in 2026. That seems mild, sorry.
Jennifer, I had asked, what is the maximum bondable amount that we can take out in 2026?
I don't know that, it all depends on what you're comfortable with. We, when I created the budget, I just created the budget based on what is falling off of debt. We had some debt fall off in 2025, we have more that's falling off in 2026. Right now, we only have about $200,000 that's falling off in 2026, from '25 to '26. The next big fall off is going to be in '27, I believe, '28. So I think we can add some debt, we can do it in a strategy where the debt payment isn't, like the principal payment isn't due until '27, that would be doable. I think we are to the point where we haven't brought on any new debt other than the 20 million two-year, well, we brought that on in 2024.
Four.
And so it's been a while since we discussed debt and bringing more debt on, but I think we're probably to the point where we have a long list of items that is continuing to grow every year, where we probably need to be looking at that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's move to-
I don't think 36 million. Let me clarify.
I think that was clear to everybody.
Okay, thanks.
It'd be nice if interest rates were a little lower right now, too.
Yes.
Well, let's move on to an area where we do have some funding available. And this is what I submitted for this, for this hearing, this is all still good information. For 2026, we've got the Playland renovation project, you know, we're paying on that now, like we just got, I'm not sure if it's the final payment, we've just got another payment for the Sky Trail, we just got that in and submitted it this week. So we're, we're in process on that project, and we're out for RFP for the Carousel Building renovation. So those things are moving along. But what I'd kind of like to do is move on to this slide. I have had some conversations, just again, preliminary, I've been saying that a lot today, preliminary conversations, but this time with Ms. Sauer. And as you know, we get about $1.9 million a year annually from the Gage Park sales tax, that the county, that's the county's portion that we receive. The zoo and the Discovery Center are moving full ahead on projects because they're borrowing against that money. They're not, you know, they're not waiting to collect these until they can pay it all off with cash, they're borrowing against it. That's essentially what I'm proposing and trying to do. I don't really want to bond it, you know, I want to try to find a way to leverage these funds with existing county dollars. I had proposed, when I talked to Jennifer, this is kind of what I want to talk about, is this is, I'll get to the projects on the next slide, but there are 16 projects. They total $18.5 million. If we did these over a length of time, yeah, that's it. If we did these over, starting, we've already started on some of them this year, and we're just paying cash for those obviously, you know, the money that's coming in. But if we go through 2031, we would accomplish all of these projects, and I'll talk about them in a second, the max debt that we would get into would be $8.8 million. But if we didn't- But if we didn't add any other projects, we would be debt-free by 2031 with this plan that I'm proposing. Because while we are doing these projects and borrowing the money, we're also paying back 25% of that debt annually. The projects, I think there's been some concern that, and I've had comments that I don't want to see Gage Park torn up every year, all, you know, forever now, because we're always doing projects, and that we're going to lose all of our green space. I don't want to see all of the green space go away. I agree with all of those things. I agree. I don't want to see that either. Many of these projects, the Playland renovation, the Carousel, that, you know, those we've talked about, the Accessible Ball Diamond, that's just refinishing it, that's not new. The Rose Garden, again, that's just a refresh, we're not adding a new facility. The Grand Rock Garden renovation, that's existing. Snyder Cabin, we'll talk about that a little bit here as I go through this. And then Helen Hawker. So those would be new. I mean, probably. Sand volleyball complex. So if you play sand volleyball and you play at Gage Park, it's okay, but it's not ideal. We don't have lighting. We don't have, we don't have what I would consider the amenities to make that a really top-notch sand volleyball experience. We don't have stands for officials. We don't offer officials. We don't, if the ball gets past you, it's either rolling in the parking lot or down a big hill. It's just not ideal, you know. We'd like to relocate that, make it a little bigger. We put lights up, put a fence around it. We'd like to put it over by the Accessible Ball Diamond, along that road, sort of over by where our current maintenance compound is. We think that's a great spot. It would have minimal impact. It would still leave a lot, most all of the green space available where kids are playing soccer and stuff now along Ten Street. So very little impact. We've got parking over there, so we like that spot. The, I'm just talking about these new ones. Snyder's Cabin, you know Snyder's Cabin needs to be replaced, right? It was an open-air shelter that got walls put around it at one point. I've got a big number on there, $3 million. It would cost us $3 million to replace Snyder's Cabin. And it may not be $3 million to do what I'm thinking about doing, but let's build an enclosed shelter over there to replace Snyder's Cabin and maybe a couple of open-air shelters as well. Gage Park is, as you know, just packed with people on a regular basis. And if we have these facilities, they'll be used. They'll be used every day. They'll be rented. There'll be birthday parties and there'll be all kinds of events held there. And so really, that $3 million is not just Snyder's Cabin replacement. It's really, let's take a fresh look at what we're doing on all our shelters and make some changes. But we'll be strategic about it, you know. I mean, we're in the process now of, we did interviews for our master plan project, which hasn't been approved yet, but that would be another reason to do that master plan. We asked in that RFP to place special attention to Gage Park. And so we could get real strategic about what kind of improvements we want to see there over the next seven, eight, nine, 10 years and get everybody on board with a consensus. But to go back to this slide, what I think needs to happen is that we need to come up with a formal agreement between the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, and Audit Finance on how this debt is going to be managed. If we're going to allow us, one, to borrow against it, and then, two, how much, how far in debt are we willing to allow us to go? And what that debt repayment schedule looks like. So once we could, once we can narrow that down and come up to some arrangement, hopefully, then I think we, in earnest, can start making these improvements, which I, which the public wanted when they voted for the sales tax. And I don't want the county to be in an awkward situation where they see the Discovery Center making all these improvements and the zoo making all these improvements and we're sitting on our hands, you know. I don't want to be in that situation. And I think this might solve that problem. Did I take up the whole hour?
No.
Questions?
I have some questions. It appears the zoo wants to take over Big Gage Shelter. And that's where we run our camps out of, right?
Right.
I don't think it appears. I think they are taking Big Gage.
Okay. Is it a hostile takeover?
It is.
Okay. Should we sell it to them?
I don't think we have the option.
Okay.
I think they're taking it.
All right. So this new shelter is probably going to be needed sooner than later.
What we're planning on doing there, Commissioner Rippon, is as part of that Carousel project, doing an addition, that Carousel building, doing an addition there that would, we'd be able to-
Compliment your camps.
-have our summer camps.
Okay.
And honestly, that addition on the Carousel, it, not only would it do that, but we think that we would do some other additions, like some small spaces for bride and grooms to get dressed, because you could walk over and have your wedding at the Rhineus Rose Garden. Then you could come back and have your reception in that room off the Carousel. It could be a really neat, unique experience.
Yeah. Well, after you get married, you have to go get a carousel ride.
That's right.
That's tradition.
100%.
Yeah, that goes without saying. Yeah, and I realize Snyder's Cabin is subpar and that's, that needs to be scraped and, of course, there'd be a lot of other amenities to go with that. There isn't really any parking if you put it in that same location, which I think's not a bad location at all. One other thing I wanted to go back to, the Grange Hall.
Yeah.
We had a sizable donation for that project as well.
Yeah.
And-
Yeah, I didn't want to throw the number out, but the, the Friends of Ward Mead have been socking money away for a long time to help pay for that project. And I included that in the cost of the building, so this $1,220,000 would be our share if we use the current plans.
Yeah. And I think we need, we could scale that back and get that down to a more reasonable number, workable number anyway. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And I agree that with your comment about Gage Park, we need to look like we're doing something. And we are.
We are.
We're doing that Playland area. I think that's going to be a very nice addition to everything. But yeah, you don't want to look like a savings and loan or we're getting this money. We need to be doing some things with it and so, yeah.
So the prioritization of all this is the thing that I feel like a lot of this stuff needs to be done, right? It's just a matter of figuring out when to do what, how to do what. There was a master plan happening for Gage Park. Is that done?
So, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, please.
The phase one of that master plan is done, which essentially, it's a little more than this, but by and large, just went in and assessed the condition of the park and the facilities that were in it. We chose not to move forward on the second phase with the vendor that did the first phase and roll that, what we were trying to do is roll that into our department-wide master plan. So when we put that RFP out, we laid out very specific items that we wanted done for Gage Park in particular, so that we could accomplish that second phase.
Okay.
I didn't see anything for the golf course clubhouse at Cypress Ridge. Is that in there?
It's on this, it's on this slide right here, and I apologize, this is-
You had it under Family Park.
Small, but yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was looking for something separate, but.
Going back to Gage Park, one item that I did not see on there was the maintenance area. That's in really bad shape and kind of an eyesore for such a beautiful park.
So the thought process being there is that we would like to eventually reduce that footprint to probably one building, just so that we could have someplace for staff to go and someplace to store mowers and things that we use on site. And then relocate, you know, the rest of that staff to the Kansas Avenue Maintenance shop, the Florence property. We've begun some of that already. So what we'd like to see is that area reduced dramatically and, I guess for lack of a better term, cleaned up and then as much of that property as possible turned back over to green space.
And then would we be doing the same thing at Lake Shawnee?
Absolutely.
Cleaning some of that area that doesn't look very good?
Yeah, absolutely.
I like the location of this new maintenance, it's about equal distance to Gage or the lake, which is premium.
We just, we just have got to get a handle on people going in there, breaking in and swiping things, you know. That's our biggest issue. So, but we're working on that.
Okay. So if, if we're going to do that with the maintenance shops at Gage, are, would you be looking at relocating it within the park? I mean, over by the, I'm thinking over by the greenhouse or something like that?
Yeah. That's a great question because we've gone back and forth many, many times. I think ideally, the best thing, the best location would be to do something over by the greenhouse. And you'd have it all sort of over there. The greenhouse doesn't look bad. It's in pretty good shape and you could, and we're not talking about a huge facility over there. There are a lot of trees and things over there, so it'd get a little bit tricky. But it depends on what we want to do. If we want to invest in a new facility, that's where I think it would go. If we want to try to salvage a portion of the, you know, one of the buildings that are there, then we would probably keep that. If you can picture it in your mind as you turn into the complex, there's a building right there on the right. That's probably the building, right? Because it has restrooms. The rest of the buildings don't have any restrooms or anything. So that's probably the one you try to save. And you'd want to, you know, you'd want a little bit of space and be able to get in there and move around and load your, load your mowers and things like that. But we wouldn't have big pits with mulch and sand and, you know, spare parts and whatnot like we do now.
It is prime real estate in the park.
It sure is.
It really is. But you need a place for maintenance.
Yeah. I can hear some of my current and former advisory board members in my, in my head right now who are having this conversation. It's been a heated debate.
And the sand volleyball, is that something we want to definitely keep in Gage Park? Or, I mean, we have a lot of parks. I mean, is that something that we've looked at moving to a different facility also?
We have not looked at moving it. It's certainly an option. But I think what we're trying, what I, my, my vision of Gage Park is that you're, it's, I think that having the sand volleyball there just adds to it. If you're driving down Ten Street and you look over there and you see people on the Accessible Ball Diamond, you see folks playing sand volleyball, you see kids playing soccer, it's all right in that area, that same area. So all that sort of active recreation is happening in that spot. I think it makes sense. And I think at night, with those courts lit up, you're not going to be impacting any neighborhood issue, you're not going to have any issues like that in that, in that location. I think that would be a very appealing and a great use of the space personally.
And then when we talk about shelter houses at Gage Park, I mean, the only one mentioned here, believe, well, we talked about Big Gage, but we talked about Snyder's Cabin. Snyder's Cabin is, I mean, sort of an outlier when you look at it compared to the others, but Westlake's not in great shape either. And we also know that the zoo would probably like to take Helen Hawker. I think there's an open-air shelter over by the horseshoe pits that the zoo would probably like to take over as well. So, I mean, we're looking at potentially four shelter houses that would be closing or being taken over by the zoo at some point. So why are we just talking about Snyder's Cabin?
Well, that's what I tried to-
And it's the one that if we move the maintenance shops, it's on that same little road, so.
Well, yeah, I should have re-titled it. Snyder's Cabin is what was on there before. I tried to mention that, that I put that $3 million number because you're absolutely right. We've got a lot of decisions to make about shelters. And the Westlake Shelter, for example, you know, we're getting ready to make an incredible improvement to Playland and it already is just packed, I mean, with the way it is. It's going to be even more busy. And the zoo, we lost so much parking a few years ago with Kay's Garden. I could really see in the future that Westlake Shelter going away and that becoming parking and probably a restaurant facility. You know, we need to think about all the people that are coming to that park, not only where are they going to park, but is there enough, is there enough restrooms? You've got a lot of kids. You've got school buses, one after the other, coming in there. And we're probably not adequate now, frankly, on the number of restrooms. So I could see that whole area right there being redeveloped with parking, restaurants, maybe an open-air shelter. We're putting an open-air shelter in Playland as part of the Playland project, so that'll be adding one. And then whatever we do, on the internal master plan that we did for Gage Park a few years ago, we showed three shelters over there by Snyder's Cabin. And them sharing some parking and being kind of spaced around. I just want to be really cognizant of the green space and how much of it we take up. You know, I don't, I don't want every square inch of that park having a building on it. And so that will be the, that'll be the tricky part of how we move forward. So when I say strategic thinking about it, I want to get as many people involved as possible so we come out of there with the best possible plan.
Right. And I agree with you. I think the open-air shelters are beneficial in a number of ways. We talked about utilities earlier. They don't really use utilities outside of some lighting, which would possibly even be done by solar.
Yeah.
So restrooms are probably an issue. I mean, we have this giant concrete amphitheater right next to Westlake and if I'm not mistaken, the restroom for that facility is like two toilets.
Yeah. It's for both of those facilities.
Yes. And we're looking at, I mean, we could never hold an event of any size there without bringing in portable restrooms. And so, I mean, that's something we got to look at as well. I mean, parking and restrooms in Gage Park are probably our biggest issue, I would say.
I think they're right up there. I would not disagree.
And then you know as well as I do, I mean, I've said this to you a bunch of times, my biggest fear in Gage Park is the mini train and the number of crossings that it has. I think that also needs to be a priority of what we're looking at is limiting the number of crossings that that mini train has.
Yeah. We did specifically call out railway safety in that RFP for the master plan. So that's something we're trying to get a professional study done on, but how we can improve it. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't anticipate them coming up with a whole lot of different things than we've already thought about, but it'll just be part of that plan.
I mean, and limiting the amount of cars driving throughout the park would be good, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, more periphery parking instead of, you know, angled parking next to the playground is probably beneficial as well. You know, when, when you've got hundreds of kids running wild, I mean, you don't want people backing up their cars right next to them, you know. So, I mean, things like that we need to consider as well.
And I think this is something that, when you start talking about parking, I think this is also something that we can get some buy-in and maybe some additional funding from our partners there in Gage Park. Because, you know, the zoo in particular, and I've had this discussion with some of their board members, they, if you can't park at Gage Park and go to the playground, well, I guess you just don't get to go that day. It's not costing us money or revenue, but if you can't find a place to park and you can't go to the zoo, that's a big deal for them. So I think they want to see some improvements, too. So I think some of the Gage Park sales tax money that, that the zoo and the Discovery Center are collecting, I know the Discovery Center is very interested in shelters over, especially over by them, because they have kids coming in on buses and they want to have lunch and there's really nowhere to go over in that area. So there's a possibility that they may be willing to kick in to cover some of that cost. But I, I'm almost positive that the discretionary funds that the Gage Park Authority has would be used for some of these things and has already. be used for some of these things, and has already.
And then, I, man, I'm really focused on Gates Park, it seems, today.
It's okay.
But we also are going to probably have to look at the Bark Park at some point, too.
Yeah.
And, you know, how do, how do you relocate a Bark Park? And, because I, I know the zoo wants that land, right? So-
They do. Yeah, I'm essentially operating under the assumption that at some point, the only thing we'll have on that side of the park is the War Memorial. I don't see the War Memorial ever being moved. Now, whether or not we're in charge of it, or they're in charge of it, but I see that staying. You know, the Helen Hawker buildings, they want those, I'm not sure they want Helen Hawker the operation. So, in our plan, and, and you can see it on my, on my chart down here, we're talking about a new Helen Hawker complex. I'm calling it the Helen Hawker Performing Arts Center, where we would have not just a black box theater, but we would have space for art and dance and sort of those cultural programs that we don't offer, really. And whether we are offering them ourselves, or if we're partnering with folks in the community to do that, what a tremendous thing that would be for Gates Park. And we're, in our plan, we're trying to utilize that parking lot by Blaisdell Pool and the Carousel Building. That's a, that's a big parking lot and primarily underused. I mean, the, the pool does fill up, but I don't think it fills up, but we get a lot of cars in there when the pool is open.
I was, I was at Gates Park last week, and for the first time, I think I saw probably about 20 spaces available left in that spot.
Yeah.
I did a master plan years ago for Gates Park, and I, I had relocated Helen Hawker Theater in that complex where the tennis courts are.
That's where we're at.
And, and the reason being is, you have that big parking lot, it's not used at night.
Yeah.
And, there you have it.
That's exactly what we're-
And parking is so expensive to put in, that's, that would be a huge advantage of doing that. The, the other thing I think that would probably survive even, I don't think the zoo would want to mess with, is the Munn Memorial. That's, that's-
Yeah, I have that being a little bit over, so I, I think that stays there, too, right? And we've, you know, we've done a lot of improvements to it over the last few years. It looks remarkably better.
The Bark Park, unfortunately, I don't know if it would, as a future Gates Park. Maybe it's a different park, and, but I will say-
I could be convinced.
It's one of the most heavily-used things in that park.
It is.
It is, but it takes up a lot of prime real estate, and it's, yeah, I don't know.
So, I'm going to move to Lake Shawnee now.
Yeah.
And, you know, at Lake Shawnee, we have the row club, the yacht club, and the ski club, in three separate buildings around the lake. Is there a reason why we can't just have a boat club and put all of them in, in one building? Because we're, we're looking at two of those buildings, potentially renovating or replacing. I, I mean, would we not be able to build, if we were going to build a new facility for boat storage and their clubs, to just have one for all three of them?
Well, I think anything's possible. I think before I was here, the former director had a plan drawn up for the yacht club and the rowing, yacht club and a rowing house combination. And, and I've seen those plans, we still have those plans, and they look great. The, if I remember correctly, the, or what I was told, was that the yacht club didn't like the location, just because you, wind plays such a big factor for them as far as getting out onto the lake and then being able to dock, so they didn't like the proposed location. But I'm sure we can figure that out. You know, that doesn't seem like a big deal to me. I, I would love to do that, because I don't think it's an ideal situation that we have now. You know, the yacht, the best thing about the yacht club right now is the boat storage. We've, we've cleaned that area up, they, they, they store their, their boats there all year. That, that's probably the best thing about it, and that would be their reason probably for wanting to stay in that location. But, you know, you have to drive into Ted End's Gardens to get into that area, and then you go down to the boat ramp, and anybody can go down there, as they should, as they should be able to. But there, it, from time to time, we get conflict between the yacht club participants and people that are just there to fish or put their boat in. So, it would be nice to have an overall plan. I don't, I don't hate that idea, we just haven't moved that way.
Okay.
Oh, I-
Okay.
July is Parks and Recreation Month, remember that? I like to bring that up during budget time.
We should shoot on fireworks this weekend.
So, yes.
Big weekend.
I'll get wrong on that.
Parks and Recreation at Lake Shawnee, so-
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we are 13.25 minutes ahead of, or, 12.25. So, that's all I have for today, if anybody else has anything else. All right. I hope everybody has a happy holiday, we'll see you on Monday.